I'll call the Oak Park Heights City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 27th to order. First is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then next is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes for tonight?
I'll move the agenda.
Second, motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next is Council staff reports. On the 15th, I had National League of Cities Transportation and Infrastructure meeting. On the 16th, I had National League of Cities Women in Government meeting. And just as a heads up, they are doing the Leadership Award again for anyone that's a member of that city or a member of the NLC. On the 19th, had Metro Cities Transportation General Government. That was our last group meeting. Oh, I forgot, I also had Local Economies for Lake Minnesota Cities. And then on the 22nd, last week, I attended the ribbon cutting and grand opening at Royal Credit Union and then went up to Duluth for the American Planning Conference. The city was, the city in Washington County was recognized by the American Planning Association for Partnerships in Planning Award for the LNS King Plant Reuse Advisory Panel. And then this morning, our city was also recognized by the Energy Transition and D for the same award. Had Integrated, see on the 26th, had the Integrated Resource Plan with Excel. And today was the Energy Transition Advisory Committee, and that was in Cohasset. I did send Jen some information that I want all of you and people in the city and staff. There's a survey that's going out relative to the final plan. And what it was sent out before, for whatever reason, I don't know if it just didn't circulate well, but there was only three people in Washington County that responded to it, and I was one of them. So it's kind of a poor response from our city, Washington County. So, and then if you could put it on the website, too, and all responses have to be in by October 6th. And then it was sad news this morning, too, because I was looking forward to seeing them. I hadn't seen them for a while because of COVID, but Mayor Greg Hagy passed away yesterday from cancer. And he was just a really special man, so really missed him this morning. Then I have tomorrow, National League of Cities, the Small Cities Group. Then on Thursday, we have a ribbon cutting at Norwich Crosswalk. And then on the 4th, we have a call with our lobbyist, again, Ann and Angie, for talking through some more of the issues that we have going before the legislature next year. And then they sprung it on us this morning. We're going to have five more meetings with the Subtax Task Force for the Energy Transition, trying to put it all together. So hopefully, everybody will put those surveys together so we can get that thing finished, so I don't have to travel so much anymore. Next is Councilmember Doherty.
Yeah, I also attended the ribbon cutting at Royal Credit Union and was on the, whatever it was, Zoom or Team for the Integrated Resource Plan meeting yesterday.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Runk?
I attended the Lower St. Croix Valley Watershed, which is the more regional arm of the Watershed Association yesterday, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Next is visitor comment section. This is a time for anyone in the audience that would like to talk to the council about anything that's not on the agenda.
Didn't you want to do the police chief and?
Oh, yes, I could.
Got your back.
I told you I was tired.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of quick things here. Update council, application process closed, and we did interviews last week. We did two sets of interviews already. We're trying to move fast, as we know, the candidate pool is quite slim nowadays. We have four good candidates, actually, that have come through, and we've got all of them in background phase at this point, and they are currently doing ride-alongs, checking out our city, just as much as we check out them. So that's in the works, and we can talk more about that in the new business later on. We have a couple of events coming up. We have homecoming this Friday, of course. We'll be out there in full force. We'll have eight officers out at the high school along with the carnival just before that. And staffing changes, I'm sorry, one other event we have coming up, October 5th. And the 6th, we have coffee with a cop, and that will be out at Botwells, and it'll be out at Oak Park Senior Living, those two days. And then some staffing change update with the absence of Sergeant, recently left to go to another agency. We went ahead and moved Joe Croft into acting sergeant position right now. So that's not a permanent position, but it's an acting. A lot of responsibilities and supervisory needs that we need to keep flowing and keep the department moving. And he's able to fulfill that for us with his 30 years of experience and background with management classes and supervision classes, so that was an easy maneuver there. That's all I have. Questions?
Assistant Administrator Jennifer Pinsky.
Mayor and Council, I have two things to report. First, the recycling award winner for the second choice for September was Audrey and Joe Valento at 1459857 Street North. And then we have cleanup day coming up on Saturday, October 1st, 7:30 to 1:00. It's in the southwest parking lot of Anderson Corporation. We just ask that residents bring, enter off of Osgood Avenue.
Thank you. I already went through the visitor section, so we'll go on to consent agenda, which is approve Bills and Investments, check 68522 to 68570 for $845,336.72. Approve City Council Minutes from September 13th, 2022. Approve Fifth Payment Request for Eureka Construction Incorporated for Norrell Avenue Improvements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Johnson. Jennifer, can you take the roll?
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Runk?
Yes.
Mayor McComber?
Yes.
Then we'll move on to public hearings. We have two for tonight, but the first one is public hearing for increase in on-sale liquor, on-sale 3.2, off-sale 3.2, and wine license fees for 2023. Jennifer?
Mayor and Council, the city council has a practice of reviewing liquor license fees for the on-sale and off-sale and wine license fees. And they do that every two years. You did review this two years ago. The increase is based off of a two-year implicit price deflator. And two years ago, the city council opted not to do an increase based on COVID, essentially, with the shutdowns that were going on. And so by bringing it forward today for a public hearing to increase the fees based on a four-year, I'm sorry, a three-year implicit price deflator, being that we haven't increased prices now in four years. So I did send out a public hearing notice to all affected liquor license holders. I did publish it in the Stillwater Gazette and posted it here at City Hall. So staff is recommending, based on that three-year implicit price deflator, an on-sale liquor license fee increase from $3,638 to $4,103 per year, on-sale 3.2 from $184 to $208 per year, off-sale 3.2 from $63 to $71 per year, and a wine license fee increase from $748 to $844 per year.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to talk about the increases?
I'll move. We close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Johnson. Any discussion regarding Jennifer's report? All in favor?
I was going to say, I got one question. Were you doing anything with off-sale?
The off-sale intoxicating?
Yeah.
So that license fee is set by the state of Minnesota?
Okay.
So there's nothing we can do about that?
And all on sale, all on sale. All in favor?
Aye. Did we get, did someone make a motion? I'm sorry. I'll make that motion.
Yeah, but weren't we just closing the public?
We were just closing the public hearing.
Okay.
Oh, I thought you voted on that. I'm sorry.
No, that was a motion by Runk Johnson to close the public hearing.
Gotcha.
So now we need a motion on approving Jennifer's report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Going to vote opposed.
Hareen?
I'm voting against.
You are?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's 3-1. Councilmember Doherty, no. Next is public hearing on request by St. Croix Yacht Club regarding noise ordinance for a concert to be held on October 1st, 2022. Is that you, Jennifer, again?
Yes, Mayor and Council, the city received a request from St. Croix Yacht Club. They are wanting to have an indoor concert on October 1st. They would like the concert to go until 11:15 PM, and per city ordinance, noise needs to be ceased by 10 PM. This is an indoor concert, so it's a little different than the outdoor concert that you've done in the past, but we're following the same procedure to see if city council would be willing to deviate under a one-time condition that they be authorized to have their concert go until 11:15. This is, again, similar to what you've done for Stillwater Bowl. However, that was an outdoor concert. I did send a public hearing notice to all properties within 500 feet, published in the Stillwater Gazette, posted here at City Hall. And we did receive one written comment, which was included in your packet for this evening.
Thank you. Then I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to talk about the concert? Yes, please, come forward, and can you say your name and address for the record?
Yes. Michael Arnold. I live at 4284 Paris Avenue North, which is Baytown Township. I represent the St. Croix Yacht Club. I'm the chair of this particular event, and it's the only event that we hold where we have an indoor band in our facility. We have talked to the new band that will be performing, and we expect the noise to be at a lower level. But we did want to at least apply for a deviation in case we did have any problems, because we do have the Sunnyside condos are very close to the property. So we at least wanted to ask for a deviation at this time.
I know sometimes when the boats go down the river, they're probably louder.
Right, and we do have a full indoor facility. We have sound in the ceiling, sound absorbancy. And yeah, so we'll be having it at a lower decibel level, but we still have the doors open for people coming and going, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? And there's their motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Doherty. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any discussion regarding?
Just a question. Is this a ticketed event, or what is this?
The yacht club's a private, we're only club, and so the members only.
Okay.
We do put it out to the Sunnyside Marina members, so that's the only outside.
Any other questions? And there's your motion to approve this, to extend it to 11:15?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good time, and hopefully, the weather's good for you.
Yes.
It looks like it's supposed to be.
Hold it here. Did we follow procedure right? Did we close the public hearing up?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I thought I was the only one tired. Okay, so then we'll move on to old business, which is City Ordinance 1412 relating to sale, possession, and use of cannabinoid products and related devices. Jennifer?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as you recall, the chief of police and staff brought this to your attention at a council meeting in July, that state law changes allowing certain CBD cannabinoid products to be offered for sale. And many communities are creating or have created ordinances for regulation, licensing of these types of products. And the city council had requested staff prepare an ordinance for review and potential approval effort for this council meeting. So enclosed in your packet is a draft or proposed ordinance for regulating sales use licensure of cannabinoid products and related devices. This ordinance follows the similar structure for our tobacco licensing or alcohol licensing. And also included in your memo, you'll see that staff had reviewed other fees in other surrounding communities and consulted with the city attorney's office and the chief of police, and is recommending an annual license fee based on enforcement costs of $2,500 per year. Any questions?
Thank you. Council, have any discussion regarding this?
Yeah, the only thing I wasn't sure of, or the reasoning why, is the number of licenses which will be issued. To me, I mean, this is kind of still going. I know liquor stores are trying to get some, I mean, there's going to be a lot of stuff going on with the legislature when they do get back in session. And I don't, I mean, I think limited to what we already have versus figuring out something else, like, you know, limited to legal, or things that are legally allowed to sell, or something would make more sense.
I tend to agree with you for the simple reason that there's been so much confusion that came down from the legislature on this, and they actually are going to need to clean this, clean this up. But I would agree with keeping it just to the ones that we already.
Well, no, I'm saying, I'm saying not doing that.
He's saying strike D.
Where exactly?
It's page six, D.
Okay.
Is it right now? Yeah, because I think we should, because you know, I think there's going to be other places that are going to be allowed to by the laws, or something's going to change. But to change, maybe that wording should just be something dealing with, you know, something about places that are legally allowed to do it, we would license them. I don't know.
I mean, it's too bad that it's such a mess right now, with so many cities just don't know what to do. Put a moratorium on wheat. But you know, it's probably going to be getting sold somehow, and then how does our police department enforce it if we don't have something?
Well, no, I mean, we'd be licensing them, and they'd follow the ordinance. But I'm just saying, to say, okay, you got one, now nobody else can have one. To me, it doesn't seem like it's fair. If somebody has a business and they change the law that then allows them to sell it, then we should license them and allow them to sell it. Right now, we're saying, no, sorry.
We're saying only the ones that currently are selling are eligible to. If somebody's thinking about it and they haven't started yet, we're saying not too late.
Yeah, you're too cautious. So should we just strike D, then?
I would be okay with that, I think.
So under 1412.04D?
You strike it?
Strike that.
Other than that, I hadn't, yeah, everything else looked fine with me.
Anybody else have any questions on any of it?
May I ask, Jennifer, does there violations and penalties provision? Is that from what I emailed you earlier today that they have in front of them?
The violation, the changes I just sent me, no, it's not in front.
Okay, so I would like to make a recommendation to you. Upon further review of this ordinance, it does not appear that you are creating penalties or violations for individuals who are selling products that are in violation of your ordinance more generally. Minnesota Statute 151.72, so those labeling and all of those requirements. Right now, as it is before you, it only has a violation for the specific procurement by someone who is over 21, for someone who is under 21, and then if you already have a license. Normally, that type of thing is structurally appropriate, because under state statute, they're required to have a license, and you have a state statute to use. But under the Minnesota State statute, you don't need a license to sell these products. So there needs to be some sort of enforcement mechanism for people who do not obtain a license from the city as you are requesting of them, and then to provide additional penalties for the other illegal acts, like sales and possession and use that are included in this ordinance. So what I propose is striking the, under 1412.12 on page 12. Give me a second. So under A, for criminal penalty, my recommendation is to strike all of that and replace it with misdemeanors stating that nothing in this article shall prohibit the city from seeking prosecution as a misdemeanor for any violation of this article. And then under B, for civil penalties, striking the language just above that in the all caps language, because that restricts the application of those fees to only the sale of cannabinoids to a person under age 21, or permit a person of age 21 to use tobacco products on the premises. So by removing that, those offenses now apply to license holders. And by updating that misdemeanors, you actually have a mechanism to enforce this ordinance against individuals who choose not to get a license and violate your ordinance without being a licensee.
Is everyone okay with those changes?
I'm okay with the changes, but I think because they're so extensive, I would prefer that we have them incorporated and brought back at the next meeting.
I'd agree.
That'd be great.
I also have a quick question under the, two questions, actually, but kind of related. Is this in the violations and penalties in line with our new tobacco policy with the penalties? And then also, it looks like under 1412.13A, it references right now subdivision C, but I'm not seeing a subdivision C. So we might just need to make sure that that's.
Yeah, so that's my recommendation, is to strike that.
Strike that. But then would we still have the alternative civil penalties?
That would only be for licensees.
Okay.
So why don't you, you and Jen work on that and bring it back to us for the next council meeting?
We have it put together right now with those changes. If you want to adopt it with those changes, you have that option to make a motion to adopt it as amended, as discussed in the meeting tonight.
I think we prefer to see it.
Okay. Do you have any additional questions on, like, the other items in this? I've spent a lot of time on that, so I might be able to answer them while I'm at your meeting tonight, but I don't know if I will be in attendance at your next meeting.
I didn't.
Okay, great.
Anybody else?
Nope.
So you want to make a motion to table this till the next council meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Move on to new business, adopt resolution approving 2023 proposed budget and proposed tax levies. Betty?
Good evening. Fun part of the meeting tonight.
Yes.
So tonight, tonight I'm bringing to you the. So tonight, tonight I'm bringing to you the, the 2023 budget that we had started a few months ago and worked on as a counsel and with the department and staff, also the related tax levy. And if counsel prefers, I can give you a little summary of it with a PowerPoint tonight so that you kind of have an idea and that the public has an idea of what we will be presenting for their truth of taxation notices.
Sure.
So if Jen wants to start on the PowerPoint?
No, she's gonna leave.
Sure you didn't want the easel, Betty?
Sorry, what?
You didn't want the easel?
She'd do it as an interpretive dance.
Oh, you're in trouble now.
That would be some kind of scramble.
Okay, 2023 budget. So the general fund budget, this year we have an increase of about $343,787. So I'm kind of going through the column that's listed in blue right now. So that's an increase over the 2022 budget. The increases mainly, I broke them down by our operations, our transfers, which includes our debt and our capital improvements for our total budget. The personnel costs have an increase of $183,000. That is all due to the contractual increases that we have with our unions and our staff. And then we also have included in that an additional police officer to be added to the staff. In our contractual, that large increase of $104,000, the majority portion of that is related to our new contract with our solid waste collection. We had a contract for eight years, and that is expired, and we renegotiated. Costs have increased significantly in those eight years. Also, services have diminished a lot in those eight years. So I think if Public Watch is a newsletter, I think it will be have a information in there outlining, outlining what our new services will look like. With that, it's about $70,000 of an increase to cover those costs. The other things that were in there are contractual costs for our utilities. Utility rates are increasing, as everybody knows, and there's a 6% increase over last year and an expected 6% for the next three years. So that's built in there. The supplies, the increase of $18,725, basically that's our fuel costs. I think we have about $15,000 of that related to just our gasoline for our vehicles. The insurances, our health insurance rates did minimal increase this year, but because we are on a scale of ages, as everybody ages one more year, we do have an increase in our premiums that way, so that accounts for about $10,000 of that. Our general insurance actually went down around $10,000, so our general property insurance has gone down. But our workman's comp insurance went up about $20,000. It's not due to our experience rate, it's actually due just to all of the added costs that have been spread throughout the, the state, being we are with the league of Minnesota cities. So that makes up that. Other than that, our capital, we have no increase in our debt. Our debt looks very stable, will drop off in 2028, should remain about $579,000 till that time. Capital improvements, we set aside funds for purchasing vehicles, computers, park improvements, street improvements, mill and overlay. Those funds, there was only a $15,000 increase this year. We did decrease the money that we set aside for M Lash Bor, the eradication of that. We had $50,000 in last year's budget, we don't need that this year because we have received a DNR grant to help assist us in that. So that is a summary of our $343,000 increase, and it's a 5.29% increase. So on the next page, then we have the general fund budget for the revenue. So our revenues don't change much, 97% of our revenue comes from taxes. We don't have, we're limited on our other sources of where we can collect money. And so basically, the larger ones are where we increased what we expect to get for our building permits this year, that's around $15,000. Our fines and forfeits have been going down every year. In our governmental revenue, the actual $124,000 included $100,000, for $124,000 for 2022, included $100,000 from police aid. I got kind of zealous last year, we over budgeted about $10,000 for that. So in all honesty, you know, then just bringing the budget back down to where it should be with $111,000. The miscellaneous revenues, the biggest increase there actually has to do with the billing of our SRO agent that goes to the school. That's because I'm expecting a full year where 2022 was a partial year, just what we budgeted because we didn't know of COVID. So with that, we had a $40,900 increase in our revenues other than taxes. So, next page. Just kind of a summary of what I just said on how we went from our 2022 tax levy of $6,340,000. Our 2023 changes, we have our increase in our revenues, which will reduce the amount we need for a tax levy. We had changes in expenditure from the contractual of $103,000, the additional officer that's estimated about $95,000. Increase in our sanitation's costs was 68. Utilities, our contractual with utilities, computers and our consultants are up $25,000. Fuel costs $15,000. Again, the insurance down 10. Workman's comp up $19,000, then other expenditures at $12,077. Capital transfers, that's that $15,500 increase just rounded. So our 2023 tax levy looks at $6,337,260. $6,337,260. So just another summary of our proposed tax levy as compared to our 2022 tax levy. We have a $302,000 increase, 5%. Our operations is $287,000, and that transfers is $15,550. So next then, we take the tax levy, and that's distributed over the, the values of everybody's property, and that's how we come up with taxes. With doing that, we come up with a tax rate. So for 2023, the county establishes the values for the properties in Oak Park Heights. When they revalued the residential properties for 2023's taxes, they increased the residential properties at 15.4%. Commercial, they did 1.7%. And the Department of Revenue actually established the public utility at a 12.96% increase. So you can see, we have a pretty unique situation in Oak Park Heights where we have one-third, one-third, one-third. We have one-third public utility, one-third residential, and one-third commercial. They all share in the property taxes almost on an equal basis. And so if you change the percentages, so if everybody went up 15%, everybody's taxes would remain the same. However, when you shift, like the property taxes for residential's went up 15%, commercial one only went up 1%, now you're gonna have residential pulling a greater amount of the tax levy burden. And so that's what we're expecting to see in 2023. Also, the truth and taxation notices that will be mailed out will have the wrong amounts for the, the tax rates and the wrong amounts for the taxes for the city of Oak Park Heights. This is due to the Department of Revenue establishing the rates for the public utilities. They do this in May. They give those monies, that amount that they're established, to the county at that time, the county puts them in their records. During that time, from May till September, there's appeal dates, there's negotiating dates with Excel Energy, and they finally establish the rates then September 16th. They did establish the rates initially at $276 million, which was the 12% increase. They finalized them at $246 million, which reduced it all the way back to what it was last year. So it's a 0.97, less than 1% increase compared to last year. So with doing that, it, it messes up the tax rate, it messes up what will be on your tax statement for your truth and taxation. So for instance, with the city estimate, we're gonna say there's $12,667,000 in tax capacity. That will give us a 48.53 tax rate, and so the taxes really on a $308,000 home will be $1,448. It'll be a 10% increase over last year's taxes. The county, however, will have their values overstated. The tax rate will be down to 46.988, and your taxes will reflect a $1,401 for a $308,000 home. So they'll actually be off $47. These are all estimates, I'm hoping to be close, but within that range. So it'll be about 3% difference on what the actual is compared to what you will see on your TNT. When you get your final tax rates, or your final tax bills, that will be correct, and it would show more the 1,448, that would be due for your taxes. So, again, just a summary of a $308,000 home, that's our median home in Oak Park Heights. In 2022, the taxes will be $1,312. In 2023, they're $1,448. That's a $136 increase. Of that increase, I broke it down to how much relates to that 15% increase that you had in value, and that is actually $68. And then $68 of that increase also is because we have increased the tax levy. So that you get a feeling that half of it isn't in the control of the city, it's the value of the property. So I kind of did a five-year change. How does that change? So in 2019, a median home in Oak Park Heights was $224,000, and the taxes were $1,038. In 2023, a median home is $308,000, tax rate is 48.5, and the taxes are $1,448. So $410 difference during that five-year period, that's a 39% increase over five years. But if you look at the value of the property, the property increased 37.5%. So those value changes are something that we, we aren't controlling, we do control the budget. And so it's just that bigger share that residential properties will be sharing in taxes versus what they used to share. So with that, I guess unless there's any questions or any changes that the council would make, I ask that they adopt this budget tonight along with the related tax levy. This will be sent to the county, it needs to be sent by September 30th, it'll be the one that they do use for the truth and taxation notices. We are allowed to change the tax levy downward between now and December, and change the budget any way we would like, but we cannot increase the tax levy after it is adopted tonight.
You did an excellent job putting that budget together.
Thank you.
And thanks to council and department heads for being conservative. It's a good budget.
I always get a kick out of the fact that we send, we set the truth and taxation letter and basically telling them that we're not telling, the county is not telling them the truth for the, for the truth and taxation here.
We are telling the truth, that's right.
But I mean, it's, it's like, here's the truth and taxation, but it's not really true. These numbers are gonna change.
So is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving the 2023 proposed budget and proposed tax levies?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Johnson. Jennifer, can you take the role?
Councilmember Doertie.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk?
Yes.
Mayor McCumber?
Yes. And Betty, next is to schedule the public comment hearing meeting for the truth and taxation.
So with adopting of our preliminary, preliminary budget tonight, we also have to schedule our truth and taxation notice as part of that. And with doing that, we have tentatively set December 13th. We must do this between November 25th and December 28th, preferably at a scheduled meeting. December 13th is our scheduled meeting, and I'd like to ask the council establish that meeting for 6:00 PM, Truth and Taxation, December 13th. We do need to adopt the final budget by December 28th.
Thank you. So is there a motion to schedule the public comment hearing for Truth and Taxation for Tuesday, December 13th, 2022, at 6:00 PM here at City Hall?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Runk, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Next is SOTI Cigar Site Plan Review, seven expansion at 5946 Osgood Avenue North, within Stillwater Crossings Retail Center. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Yes, as the mayor has indicated, we have a request for design guidelines, site plan review for 5946 Osgood Avenue North. It's at the Stillwater Crossing Shopping Center. It'll be a 470 square foot addition to that building at the south side for expansion of SOTI cigars. A property of Zone B2, it's a pretty straightforward request, there's just some landscaping in this area. So the parking lot, drive aisles and so forth are not, not impacted with this addition. Setbacks are met for the site, there is more than adequate parking. The, the parking lots, as I indicated, will not change. Again, we will lose some rather nice landscaping in that area, but the building expansion is important also. No issues with grading drainage, et cetera. The Planning Commission at their meeting approved the request unanimously. They did add a condition that you'll find in the resolution in front of you. There is a typo in condition, in condition five in, in your resolution, it says devise, it should be device. So the applicant shall install a pedestrian safety device at the south edge of the front sidewalk. There were some concerns that the corner of that building will go upright against the, the curb line, and so the Planning Commission asked them to devise, some device for that, for that site. So that, that should be, that will be reflected in the final resolution that the mayor will sign.
Now, there's always been a request for bike racks, there wasn't one on this.
I believe there's already one there. Thanks for reminding me.
Does council have any questions for Scott? Is the applicant here?
One thing I have is, where's, is, I just don't know what this, install a pedestrian safety device, were both?
They were looking, the Planning Commission just left it open for the applicant, maybe if there's some sort of sign, some sort of way to just notify the applicant at the end of that sidewalk that the curb is there, or whatever. We'll let the, we'll let the applicant.
So that they just don't step off the curb with them?
Right, right. Now, it could be a matter of just painting something on the sidewalk, whatever the case might be, signage.
Are there any other questions for Scott? Is there any question from the applicant?
You expect more traffic now that the road has changed?
Yes.
That should be a good thing.
So is there a motion to approve the resolution with that minor change?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Doertie, second by Councilmember Runk. Jennifer, can you take the role?
Councilmember Doertie.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk?
Yes.
Mayor McCumber?
Yes. Next, we have R. Nelson Conditional Use Permit, driveway curb cut greater than 24 feet at 1524264th Street. Scott?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the Conditional Use Permit had previously been granted in July of 2020 for an attached garage and house addition to the site. The applicant is now prepared to install the driveway for this site, and has requested a 60-foot wide driveway curb cut essentially. The, the curb at that location is residential, so it's a surmountable curb, it's not a, you know, a barrier curb, and so it's remountable. And what the, what the ordinance indicates is that, is that a limit to 24 feet typically for residential curb cuts is what's specified, also commercial curb cuts for that matter. What we found in, in looking at that is the boulevard is, is quite wide, 64th Street is 60 feet wide, there's adequate space to turn into that site, even if there is a boulevard in place of grassed or a landscaped boulevard. So what staff has suggested is a 30-foot wide curb cut, which is roughly the width of the, of the garage doors, of the front of the garage. The Planning Commission looked at that, thought that was reasonable. Some of the other curb cuts in that area are between 24 and 28 feet roughly, so a 60-foot curb cut, especially for a residential structure, would be out of character for the neighborhood. We typically don't find such wide curb cuts for, for a residential property. So with that, again, the Planning Commission agreed with the staff recommendation with a 30-foot curb cut, and if you review the resolution for that. Go back. If I have a resolution, I pack it. Going from Planning Commission to City Council package, just give me a second, thank you. So we've, the Planning Commission wanted to make it clear as to the condition of that, condition of that, a recommendation of that approval. So the Condition Three would read, "An area boulevard at least 15 feet wide from the curb of 64th Street should be planted with grass or landscaping, not including gravel, pavers, or other drivable hard surface, maintained from the west property length to the curb cut of the driveway." So what they're saying is, instead of having all that open and as a driveway, we're still allowing them 30 feet, which is more than adequate for a residential, but they have to maintain a 15-foot boulevard that's grassed or landscaped. So that's how the resolution condition would read. So with that, any questions? And the applicants are here also.
Applicants, everyone had the public hearing at the, I assume this is yours, had the public hearing, and any questions for Scott or the council?
Just have some.
Sure, come forward. Say your name and address, please.
Okay. It's kind of nerve-wracking coming up here in front of everybody. My name's Tiana Nelson. My name's Tiana Nelson, this is my husband Rick. We live at 1524264th Street North, the property that is in front of you. Has anybody driven by the house or seen it after the construction? You can kind of see how there's the main entrance in the middle, the right side is the residential home, and then on the left side, all attached within, is a garage, two-car garage, two building, or two doors in the front. And then above, we have an apartment. So in the back, you have a separate entrance for this apartment. So keep that in mind as well as I go through my speech. Sorry, I apologize, but this is very important to us because it's very important. So Scott was saying that the median of the driveways is approximately 24 feet to 28 feet. That's not true. We have gone around the neighborhood and we have scanned and measured all the driveways that we could. I have two examples here for you. One was a member who spoke at the hearing earlier with Scott and the commission and stated that he didn't agree with our driveway either, and he suggested a U, which he has. I brought that picture here to show you and to explain why that's not appropriate for us. And the city also agreed, the Planning Commission also agreed that that wouldn't be appropriate. But understanding that his driveway is a lot larger than ours as well, and his measures a total of 48 feet curb cut, and so again, that wouldn't be appropriate for us. I also have another property, this is located on Paris Avenue. It's a 90-foot curb cut with three doors, the three-door garage. This property is, it's owned in the triangular little area there, super cute. And maybe it was a duplex or something a long time ago, and that's why it was a larger curb cut. But our area of the residence, or of the city is zoned towards that, so multiple units, multiple living. So I have those pictures here. And then I also have, on the back, we did write down some of the different locations, and none of them are 24 feet in which your ordinance states. They're all above 28 feet and as big as the 90-foot driveway curb cut. So I will give those to you so you can take a look.
Sure. The one I already know.
Yeah.
Vicki's house. That used to have a boat sticking out of the front end of it.
Oh.
Up at the gable.
Oh.
It was a shop at one time for somebody, a machinist.
Okay. So I think with all of that being said, and it's just this 24-foot is, it's, I don't know if all of the cities do it, I don't know what, how that works, it's none of my business, but yeah. And then I do have a little bit of a speech to let you know and give you a little bit of a reference for you to understand our situation so that you can better make your judgment. We live at 1524264th Street North. We are the second owners of this property since it was built. This house was built in 1942 by my great-grandparents, Pearl and Robert Torgerson. It was home to three boys, and we also have three boys. Yes, they're a little bit younger, but eventually those boys will drive. Each boy will have a vehicle of their own and will need to park it somewhere. Therefore, we have built a house to sustain our children and our older adults to live here. Our home consists of single living, three different single livings. So we have three kitchens, three bathrooms, and three, four, six bathrooms. Each have their own area. So the apartment includes that. There's two bedrooms, one bathroom, and a kitchen. In our lower level, it is two bedrooms, one bathroom, and a kitchen, and then a walkout. And then our home is the upper level, which is two bedrooms, one bathroom, and a kitchen. You can see there's a theme to this. We have aging parents, those aging parents are going to live with us. I'm a nurse, and I plan to care for all of my grandparents. I will not put them in a nursing home, and I will make sure that they have good healthcare. We have added our two-car garage with a living space above. We plan to use it to its full potential. We plan to care for our aging family. We foresee the need for our grandparents and our parents and our extended family to move in as they age, and they will receive care. We plan to ensure a rich, an enriched life, full of visitors, outings, and quality family time. Now that you fully understand our commitment to our family, I want you to understand we are committed to our community too. I was born here, I was raised here, I will live here, we will stay here. That's all I have to say, since 1942. On the south side of our road, so the 64th Street North, on the south side, it's no parking anytime. Those are city signs, it states no parking at any time. During the winter months, there is an ordinance that states you cannot park on the north side of that street, and that is overnight parking. So during the day, you can park there, but if there's a plow truck that comes through, they will plow you in. So through the months of November to April, when that ordinance is in effect, there is no parking on the street. So when I have nurses, when I have people who are going to care for my grandparents, where are they going to park at night? They're going to have to park in my driveway. I need parking. And per your ordinances, two-family townhomes and multiple-family dwellings have to have at least two parking spaces per unit, and they must be provided onsite or approved, shown, and arrangement to provide for private parking nearby. There is nowhere else to park. This is it, this is all I have, this is all I have to work with. And then again, that's part of your zoning ordinance, page 301, Section 9, if that helps. Our family is just concerned with this. It's a driveway. There's really, these streets fill up so fast, we have neighbors who have teenagers as well, and the whole side, the whole north side is full of cars when they have teenagers over. And I'm trying to park them responsibly in my own driveway, at my own expense, at nothing for you. The last, the last concern is that the council, the Planning Commission, stated that my husband's, my husband's business is, told us that we are, look too commercial, and that with the pointed attention to that, he has a demolition service company, which is a contracted service for removal of the interior structure of homes. So there's no heavy equipment, there's no large equipment, there's no equipment stored outside, the garage houses all the equipment that we need. The business model is focused on manpower. We have people, we have sledgehammers, we have tools, handheld tools, we have no large equipments. We have a truck, that truck pulls our enclosed 16-foot trailer that is parked in our driveway. That is one truck that pulls a trailer. We have an additional truck, because as you know it, trucks break down and we need that resource, so we have an additional truck. On these sides of the trucks are the logos of my husband's business. Therefore, that's why they're pointing out to say that this is a commercial-looking residence. It is not. I have two trucks parked in my driveway with one trailer. So it's, it just doesn't make any sense to me. It's, this is, this is our future, this is our long-term future that we're looking towards. I want to build it now so I don't have to come back and bother you later, and that way we can get it all done and do it the right way and not have to come back time after time. The other thing that your zoning ordinance states is that on page 15-34, Section 2, Letter C, "The site upon which the vehicle is parked must have adequate space to allow turning, movements, and parking which does not result in backing in vehicles onto the public street." So if you allow us the 60 feet or the 58 feet, which is with the two-foot triangle piece on the bottom, then we can actually maneuver our cars out and place another car next to them, so when we have additional people in our property. The other thing that you might want to consider, just to comment, is that in your ordinance, it states for the size, the only thing that it states is that the 24 feet, and then the size and location of the required loading should be subject to review and approval from the zoning administrator. So I think with the changing times and with people, families getting bigger, people not moving out because the cost of living is going up 15 to 30%, you're going to get people that are living together. People are going to be coming together and they're going to need to park their cars somewhere. And if they're willing to pay for a driveway and get it off of your streets, it would probably be a more safer thing to do. So just a recommendation to put something else in there stating that maybe we should look at this again. So with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Now you've triggered some questions for me. Thanks. Scott, this is Zoned R2, so it's low downstairs, and she's saying that they have like multi-use in the house itself, thinking of like side-by-side townhouses. They each have 24-foot driveways, there might be just a little section of grass separating their driveways, but in essence, it looks like a massive driveway.
Right. So we haven't, you know, it's been a while since we've had a side-by-side twin home situation.
I'm just thinking of what it looks like.
Yeah, and typically you would have that grass strip, not always the case. But again, whenever we've had those come forward, I think probably just to the north of us, the development has situation, a planned new development that was looked at and so forth. Again, I think the concern here more is just the width that they're proposing, it's 60 feet, and staff is willing to give them 30 feet, which allows some adequate area. There also, as part of this, we have a parking pad to the side of the garage, which is 28 feet. You know, obviously room for two vehicles there, two vehicles in the driveway, two vehicles in the garage, and probably about a 24-foot area to maneuver around a 15-foot boulevard so cars can easily get in and out of there. A typical commercial driveway or, you know, passageway is 24 feet. So I don't think we're denying them anything, we're just trying to keep more of a residential character. And in terms of the area surrounding that, there is that one, I believe it goes from 64th to Paris, it serves two homes, it's been there a long time. But those driveways to the west are between 24 and 26 feet wide, the ones directed to the south are that width. So again, I'm looking at that neighborhood context. So with that, that's, we thought staff-wise that the 30-foot was very reasonable. It's wider than typical, and the Planning Commission agreed with us.
Can I think about this as being, you know, like in my neighborhood, Chuck's neighborhood, and you're just to the north of there, that it's quirky neighborhoods, that's all I can say. You know, like our house is built in 1858, you said yours is 1948. They are, just even to try and find lot lines in that area because the markers have all disappeared over time. So it is more reflective.
Was there any neighborhood, neighbors in the public area, or what happened there?
The gentleman with the U-shaped driveway explained that he believed that it would look better with a U shape.
But yours would, would that work?
Was that Blake that has the U shape? I can't remember who.
That was Andy.
It's this one. Looks like it's setback further from the road than yours is. Your garage looks like it's closer to the road than this one.
Would it work to do something to break it up in the middle of, not necessarily a U shape, but just a boulevard of some kind?
How was your, the 15-foot wide boulevard? If I break it up, then I came back the truck and trailer.
Even something, say, a five- or six-foot boulevard kind of in the middle to break it into two sections?
To be honest, it'll be run over. Just to be honest.
I know, I have no, I mean, I don't have a, if they're going to, obviously you said you're going to concrete the driveway once this is approved.
Yes.
I think that's going to look a lot better than what it looks right now.
We've had complaints about what it looks like right now. So I'd like to get all of that weed and things off of there and put concrete down so I don't have to do with it. They're running around with my children and have better things to do.
And it is.
If you're going to have your elderly family in, it'll be safer for them walking back and forth, I assume, too.
I mean, I don't know, it looks like a lot of concrete to me.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, I mean, I agree. It's not the perfect solution, but I think it looks, would look better. I mean, as far as makes life better for them, the number of parking spots, I mean, it sounds like you're not using the garage entirely for parking.
Nope, we have four-wheelers, we have bikes, we have hunting equipment, we have scuba equipment, we have storage, all of those things that require to be stored because again, we live on one level, two bedrooms, one bathroom, so that other people can live in our home.
No, the purpose of a garage is to park vehicles.
I mean, that's one of your parking spots. I wish somebody in my house would tell, like.
I mean, mine in my garage, it just isn't working.
But, you know, we're looking, we've changed some things around because we recognize the fact that people have, you know, it's just not a two-car families anymore, it's two cars and then the rest of the things that we all have. And I mean, I can understand that, I don't know.
Scott, what's the difference? If you drive around the city, you can see in different driveways, you know, there will be a camper or a boat or whatever, and it, there's just not enough room for all the cars. And if you've got teenagers, I just remember when my kids were teenagers, it wasn't just us and our vehicles, their vehicles, and then all their friends' vehicles, and like you said, you have a teenager just down the street, there's, sometimes could be a lot of cars.
Only on one side of the road too, because there's no parking on the other side of the road. So we're very limited in our parking.
And most new homes now, remember, are built with, you know, typical two, three-stall garage that will narrow down to a 24, 26-foot driveway. I mean, that's the standard throughout the metro area, standard throughout wherever. Again, you have to think of the neighborhood context and the people across the street that have that 24-foot driveway, the people to the west that have those 24, 26-foot driveways. You pave the entire 60-foot area in front of the house and a 28-foot, you know, side parking area, again, it does give it too much of a commercial look, and I think that's why the Planning Commission is concerned.
Two of my kids built houses last year, one in Lake Elmo, one in Hudson, and they have very wide driveways because they have the three-car garage, then the side, one has a, well, they both have campers, but they have very wide driveways, but that's in other cities.
It's other cities, yeah.
What's the difference in the parking capacity between what the Planning Commission approved, that's like five versus?
Parking capacity.
Like you were saying that there's like two in the garage, two in the back slab, and then two in the.
Yeah, so you'd have two in the, two in the garage, two in front of the garage door, and then they have that parking pad that essentially they're looking for that access to go all the way through to the side, you know, to the side from the, from the street. So there's at least two, maybe even more with smaller vehicles within that parking pad.
If I understand what you're saying.
You'd be looking at at least eight parking spots.
You could, if you allow them the 60-foot, you're going to allow them four parking spaces just in that, that side lot. I worry a little bit about precedence, too. You allow this to happen, they see it happen, they see the council approved it, you know, do you want this to be kind of a standard throughout the city if people request parking pads?
There's three living quarters in this.
Which, I have a question about that too, because it's Zoned R2, which is single-family or two-family dwellings.
Right, the, when they did their addition, they represented to us that they actually were just going to have that for, for family use. And I believe that's their intent with elderly parents, with children and so forth. So that, you know, really it is a single-family dwelling.
Got it.
I don't know, maybe it's, maybe it's from being on the watershed, and I look and say, they have that much impervious surface in one big concrete.
And our lot too was three lots condensed into one, because like as you said, the markers were buried and we had to have it surveyed again. And it originally was three lots, and then we condensed it into one lot.
How deep is it? Is it about 60 feet deep?
The, the entire lot?
No, the slam.
Deep?
Deep.
Maybe.
Forty-plus, because the building itself is 40 feet deep, and then the driveway in front would be an additional 30. in front would be an additional 30, so it would be 90 feet deep. 70 feet deep, sorry, four plus three. And your ordinance don't state for any parking pad where, how big, how large, how small, where it can be, it just states that you have to be five feet off of your back parking lot, or your back property.
So are they, so they're, okay, so the, what's the back on this lot?
What is the back on it?
The back and sides.
Garden.
Am I looking the back up against this white building in the picture? Because like our lot is weird because our house sits sideways. So is this going to be the back, this should be the back?
Well, if you can look at exhibit five, it shows the plot plan for this lot, too.
This over here is the neighbors', and he has a retaining wall. Do we like to butt up right up to his retaining wall? So that we don't have to deal with the grass and the weeds, just like butt right up to his retaining wall, which is the property line. It says a retaining wall and comes to the property line.
So what you had proposed to us and what your site plan shows is a five-foot setback from that side lot line, now you want to go all the way to the property line?
Mm-hmm.
So that's something different. So that, now they want to extend that parking pad all the way to the property line as opposed to giving a five-foot setback.
That five-foot setback isn't there because the total distance from the building to the retaining wall is 28 feet.
Now I'm getting even more confused, and I'm familiar with the dimension. Where were you, and Scott, when we were talking about putting in the 15-foot boulevard, where?
So the boulevard would be 15 feet wide from the curb line of 64th, going 15 feet up, and then all the way from their west property line to where that 30-foot, what we recommend is a 30-foot curb cut, so they have to maintain a 15-foot boulevard. And then the parking pad then would be behind that. We're not saying they can't have a parking pad, but they were just saying you need to have a grass boulevard in front because that's more of a residential appearance.
So you would say, unless the boulevard would, this would, the 30 feet would be from this line?
From there to roughly the edge of the garage.
The boulevard from here to?
To the west property line, yes.
But they were supposed to be five feet off that back car?
Well, they had proposed to us originally to set back their parking pad five feet, now they're saying tonight that they're going all the way to the property line with their parking pad, which they're permitted to do.
Okay.
But again, it's, you know, it's a, now would be a 30, roughly 35-foot wide parking pad.
It's only 28 feet from the building to the property line.
Well, it shows on your site plan.
Yep.
That you've got 28 feet and then a five foot.
Yep, and it was measured wrong.
Okay.
It's 28 feet in whole.
And how wide's the garage?
30.
So that's why we came up with a 30-foot wide, being a reasonable width for that curb cut. And again, which will allow them adequate space for a typical, I don't know how long their trailers are and so forth, but allowing for 24 feet between the edge of that garage and the start of that boulevard, again, that's a typical commercial parking lot.
How far is the garage back from the road?
Between the road and the garage, two small cars, so maybe 10 feet per car?
It's 22 feet from the front of the garage to the property line. And then we're suggested, and the width of the boulevard from the property line to the curb of 64th, it's 17 feet. So they'll have 24 feet then of area between that corner, that garage, Chuck, and where that boulevard would start that we proposed.
Could we have them taper the boulevard a little bit so they're?
Yeah, I mean, it could be curved and so forth. I don't have a problem with that. That doesn't have to be squared off.
Because really, you're concerned about reaching the side if you have cars over the parking pad.
Yep, and then knowing my children, I know that they're going to run over whatever is planted there, whether it be a bush, a shrub, whatever, and then I'm going to get the neighbors who already complain about us to complain about us even more. So I'm trying to fix the problem before it becomes a problem.
Okay, when was the garage constructed?
Last year, two years ago.
Okay, so the garage is in this area here?
Yes.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, there's a site plan, Mike, that shows.
Where's, which page?
It's exhibit two.
Exhibit two.
This one.
This is the plan, this is the plan.
Okay.
The picture should be in there somewhere.
I can see both sides of this, I understand the look of the neighborhood.
This is the garage.
I mean, I get it, because, I mean, I get a lot of cars parked in our house.
I know.
But I think it's.
I think we can cut down on the boulevard a little bit and let it curve in where they can get around the car that's parked in front of the garage. I don't know how you.
I think we need some green space there, and that, not going to have a.
And the rest of our property is green space.
Right.
The rest of it, we took out a sidewalk, we took out a patio.
Looking out the other side, but for the rest, for the, on the street side, from what it looks like, when they're saying it looks commercial, well, if you've got 60 feet of concrete and it's.
That's why I really wish we were having this up there, you could see and you would be like, yeah, that makes sense, this makes sense.
I mean, if somebody's going to go by, I could, I could see why they would look and say it looks commercial.
This is a neighborhood that is not a cookie cutter neighborhood like some of the other ones. It's more eclectic, it's been grandfathered in there, some of those homes are well over 100 years old, and the lots, none of them are standard lots.
Half of them are paved, half of them are not paved, half of them have people parking here, there, and the other place. Some of the buildings are historical, some of them have been updated with a sidewalk in front, that there's no other sidewalk to be seen but in front of the garage. So there is, it's a, there's every type of different home and landscaping, and it's unique.
Chuck, how is, how wide is your driveway at your place?
I have no idea.
Yours is pretty wide.
Yeah.
Up there.
And we have, we have a turnaround, or, you know, you, okay, so, okay, so, oh, so it's, it's 20, so you would, so the driveway would go all the way to the property line then, right, not five feet back?
On the west side, yep.
And on your proposal.
So essentially, that entire portion of the front of the house and side of the house will be paved?
Yeah.
If you allow them to do what?
And the garage is how many feet back from the street, you say?
22.
To the property line, and then we have another 17 feet of, you know, right away, to the, to the curb line of 64th.
So it'd be 39 feet, 39 feet back from the actual street.
From the back of the curb, right? Yeah.
We just want a nice square driveway. I don't, we don't want all cut up and, we just want a nice square driveway to go with a nice square garage.
Makes sense. This has, this process has taken us over three years. If we would have known how terrible this process is, we would not have moved to Oak Park Heights. This is absolutely ridiculous.
The tour of COVID and COVID and material and everything else.
Now the prices is insane, and the neighbors are.
Well, the neighbors are looking at the fact that you're going to put in, you know, a huge piece of concrete on the street.
They're complaining about what the condition of it is right now, we just want.
I mean, you're talking, you're going to have this huge piece of concrete and you're going to park two trucks on it.
That's what Scott's concerned about, yes.
And I said, yeah, that, I'd say it looks like a commercial entity in there, if I were driving down the street.
Have you driven by it?
What?
Have you looked at the home?
I know the home.
You've driven by it recently?
Oh, it's been a couple of weeks, I'd say, I was down there looking at the situation we had on Pecan, so yeah, I know.
Know what it looks like now with the gravel, and it's all gravelled right now, so it would look exactly the same, but with concrete, better the conditions in which it is.
Round up, unfortunately.
We're not saying that they can't have a concrete driveway and parking pad, what we're saying is we want to add some green space to allow a break in that visual of all of that pavement in that area.
So, I mean, if you, I guess if we, the boulevard, if it came from, I, what direction is it? Your back lot line forward, so right now you're saying, you know, we're saying 30, what, what would work? I mean, if we said you had to add something.
Some green space?
Yeah.
What would work?
Yeah, I mean, to make your, get back in your pad and everything else, but try and make, try and work with your.
Yeah, yeah, and it's the front of the pad on the, on the road is the problem, so that when the kids, when everyone drives into the driveway, they don't have to maneuver around to go. If we could have a five-foot pad, that would be fine, because then that would allow us a 52-foot cut.
I imagine probably with the turning radius, because we've had the accident in our house, too, where you accidentally clipped the corner of the garage backing out the truck.
Well, and when you leave with the trailer, or just a truck, you have to pull to the right because we have that extended hill that goes down, and so you have to pull to the right. We also have planning commissioners.
Yep, David, you wanted, or, come on up, we have one of our commissioners that wanted to talk.
Mayor and Council, Tyler Husby from Planning Commission, I appreciate all the conversation, this is very similar to how it went for us, and appreciate the applicant at our time during our meeting, having three or four, or three options presented to us for conversation, and then further appreciation for all the homework you guys have done on all the ordinances, all the Ts and Cs of that, so good ose to you guys, you've done your homework, and I think that's incredibly impressive to bring today. So the thing that I wanted to bring up to you guys, we're really talking about how much grass is there versus concrete, and I can appreciate Mr. Runk saying, you know, it is going to be commercial and there was no dig at you guys during our meeting, that there's negativity to the commercial aspect and the business that you run, it's really just the slab of concrete. And being in the neighborhood myself, two blocks away, I have an narrow lot, I've got a tarmac to get to my garage, so I can appreciate the need for space as well as the need for the family growth, as I just had to go through the similar thing myself with my family, so I can appreciate the need, I can appreciate the parking. I think at the end of the day, what we're talking about is how much can we concede on the green in the front of the drive, or the green in the front of the parking pad onto the road versus pavement? Because as the applicant mentioned, they will drive over it, whether it's grass, gravel, wood chips, whatever, there's admittance that it will be driven over, so are we going to allow clean concrete to be driven over or potentially muddy, dirty, unmaintainable grass? So between the 30-foot conversation that we had during the planning commission, exceeding the current ordinances, thinking through the conversation, listening to what happened again, some concessions that come to mind are instead of 30, and not going all the way to 60, but having it be 48, for example, giving that little extra room on the side for them to navigate to the side of their pad, but still allowing some green space to adhere to the neighborhood. It's a top-of-mind brainstorm conceding to the growing family needs as well as some of the neighborhoods, as well as our neighborhood impact, as well as the ordinance, so wanted to put that out there, I appreciate the time and thanks for letting me come up.
Question I have, Scott, is this, if they went with what you say, the 15-foot, is that, would that entire section actually be in the right of way?
Yes, it would be. The right of way, as I said before, between the curb of 64th and the property line is 17 feet, so we're allowing them to, yeah, so.
So, I mean, technically, it's not even on your lot.
It's not even their lot. So it's really the city property where this 15-foot boulevard would go. We're, you're allowing them to essentially pave over, you know, the right of way all the way across 60 feet wide. We're saying maintain some of that city right of way as green area. Like, if you look at the aerial photograph, exhibit four, you see all along the street, both sides.
I wish we could do that like at Club Terra, that their vehicles, their visitors drive across our city trail and drive across where there should have been green space, and everybody thinks that looks fine.
I don't think it looks fine.
I don't think, no, I'm just being sarcastic, but obviously, because it's a store property, they can't pave the parking lot, but I wish they would stay off of our city trail and not drive across the curbs and use the curb cut that was meant for.
Yeah, but I think it's important to, again, look at it, or look at the aerial photograph and envision the entire front. Now, this 2020 aerial shows the house before the garage was added, but think of this entire area then being all paved, is what you and Grant.
It would probably look nicer with the cement there than with the gravel, which is what we see at like Club Terra, and there's many gravel driveways in the old part of the city.
But they're proposing to pave it, so.
Right, but that's the problem right now, is that people don't like, they're having trouble with neighbors, I guess, because of the gravel, is that it?
Because of the east side of the road.
Okay.
Either way, they have, they don't have to, I mean, you can have a gravel driveway, but again, they, they want to put this in the concrete, or say, just add some green boulevard in that city right of way.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Or leave, leave some green right of way, it's green now, it will be green.
I'm screaming about what Tyler said, as far as making it 48, then we have some green spacing, still have some turning radius. I'm not saying that's the end-all answer, just thinking about it.
You'd have.
They'd have 12-foot boulevard, 148, and they can decide where in that 60-foot the 12-foot is.
And it could almost essentially be like a circular driveway if they needed to, put one tree there, one bush, whatever.
Well, I'd rather see some kind of, not grass, bushes, so it can't be driven over. Can we do that as a requirement?
Yeah, if you look at the condition that I put in, it indicated landscaping also, grass or landscaping, but if you want to add that to the condition, you can. Yeah, 12 feet, so what you're saying is you would, from that west property line, allow them to go, or they could do 12.
Put the 12 feet in the middle and have it go around on the other side. I just think something, it needs to be broken up, I understand what they're saying, but I, and.
I wish we had it.
You could all go out there and look at it together.
Once again, I said it was, what, 39 feet back from the curb cut to the garage, right?
Yeah.
Which means that if you put in a 15-foot, you'd still have 20.
24 feet from the corner, that west corner of the garage to that landscaped area.
You certainly should handle, with that, that much area, you certainly ought to be able to turn and go in.
Exactly.
If you have 24 feet.
Exactly. So width of a parking lot drive aisle, 24 feet.
Well, I'll put a motion on the floor at least to get us going, and I'll.
Is it going to incorporate Chuck's?
Let's just go, to start with, let's just go with the recommendation from the planning commission. I'll make that motion.
One second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Johnson, this is a resolution, so we have to roll call, or do you want to just have the discussion first?
I think now we can, now we can, if Chuck wants to amend it or anything.
Well, I'm just thinking if we said, I don't know what I'm thinking, we allow them a 48-foot, that's two 24s. And since they obviously can have two units here, whether they use them for family or whatever, that gives them kind of two driveway into this thing with a, and then with the boulevard, they can either put the two 24s together, they can separate them, but then they need to have the rest of it be a boulevard with landscaping, not just grass.
Be a 12-by-15-foot area.
And that breaks it up. Plus, do we know if this is okay watershed-wise and everything else, this much concrete, or?
It wouldn't, it's less than the, less than what's required. It wouldn't, it's less than, it's less than what's required.
I didn't want them to have to jump through another hoop.
No, but it's just all, all it's on the bank side, that's what, for people looking at it.
It's not under subject, or it's not subject to watershed, because it's less than.
So that would be my amendment.
I'll accept that.
So there's a motion by Doherty, and a second by Runk to amend, to have this as a forty-eight inch, or forty-eight-foot driveway with boulevard landscaping at your discretion.
A twelve-by-fifteen-foot.
He said no grass.
Yeah, well, it could be grass and land, but I want something more higher.
Because they will have, we should go down and plant a tree.
Is there also a requirement that this has to be cement, since that's what they're saying they're doing, or...
Well, that's what they're saying they're doing.
But can we put that as a requirement?
Well, that's, that's what they propose, so...
Okay, all right.
Okay, Scott, can you read what that's going to sound like?
Yeah, no, so that the area of the boulevard would be twelve by, at a minimum, twelve by fifteen feet with grass and requirement for something other than grass and landscaping. Did you indicate that you, it is their choice where they put that twelve by fifteen? Or do you want to specify it's in the middle of that, because otherwise you're just going to put it on the edge?
Put it on the west side.
They'll, they'll want to probably do it on the west edge, or do you want to specify that it's centered in that? You don't care?
Yeah, I don't, I just want to make that clear. Put it on the west side if they want.
Okay, are you okay with how that's going to be ordered?
Yeah, I can, I can reword that. Unless you want to see the resolution, unless you want to see the resolution come back to you next month.
Well, I think they've been waiting long.
Keep waiting longer, this...
Yeah, they probably want to get going this year.
Get the concrete.
No problem.
They're going to be shutting down. Okay, so, on the amendments, Jennifer.
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Mayor McCumber.
Yes.
Then do we have to vote on the original motion?
As amended.
Yep, as amended.
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Mayor McCumber.
Yes.
Forty-eight feet. And landscaping. You're going to get that started now, I suppose, trying to get it done before winter? Oh, I suppose.
Okay.
She's making me feel old, though, when you get up there and you say, your great-grandfather was Bob Ferguson? Said he went to high school with my mother, so what's that? Because he was from Deer Park, if I remember right.
Okay, so then we can... Request for stop sign lowering speed for Fifty-seventh Street at Omaha Avenue, Chief.
It just looks so wonderful tonight.
Mayor and Council, City Minister and myself, I've received some complaints, concerns. We've got three that I think in a packet there, and they're just looking for maybe some options or solutions to, that might impact the speed on Fifty-seventh Street. Specifically, one of the suggestions was maybe putting a stop sign at Omaha and Fifty-seventh, which...
That's what happens when we fix streets.
They road race at night.
And that was, and that was before the councilwoman moved into that block.
I complained last year about this street, so, and I got named your complaints.
The, I guess, what we're requesting is the council, you know, whatever considerations we can look into, but at least maybe we've accepted these concerns and tossed back to us to look into it further with the city engineer and...
It looks like in that neighborhood, they've used the stop signs to slow down traffic a couple of different places over the years.
They have.
It looks like, I mean, when you kind of drive down and some of the other streets, it just seems like there's some three-way stops that are just kind of randomly there, but...
Chief, last week, I mentioned earlier that I had Metro Cities, the transportation and, and general government meeting, and that was quite a topic to be in policies with regard to, there's several cities that want to reduce the speed limits, and they aren't able to because of statute one-six-nine-point-zero-one-one, which obviously, you know...
Well, and we had talked about that before, about the city overall and what that would look like. I think there's some authority there, if I remember right, I'll refer to the city engineer, but...
Well, there was a couple of cities that have already done it, but they were in violation supposedly of the statute. So trying to find out, I asked Metro Cities, can you kind of figure this thing out? Get the ordinances or whatever they did from their cities and see how they...
Right.
For, for your benefit.
Bayport just did it, if I'm not mistaken, so I mean, it's always the case, so you can do it, but it's enforcement, it's the issue.
But I was going to say, I don't think the, reducing the speed's going to help. I mean, from what I've noticed, there's some road racing, or at least some heavy speeding late at night on the street.
And stop signs would always help too, because it happened, like in our neighborhood, had the stop signs put in, because there never were any stop signs at that corner, it probably was a good idea. But there's still the usual people who do not stop.
Right, and some of those concerns we've addressed, as far as with complaints, you know, give us some timeframes, get us some specific cars, because sometimes it is just really a few individuals, or a time of the day, morning, school gets out, and then we can try to help with enforcement. I guess at this point, you know, we're looking at, you mentioned the speed limit thing, that's another whole animal, if we want to go the whole city maybe, but, and there is pros and cons to having stop signs put in. You know, they're just maybe roll them or speed up to the next one faster. So I guess that, you know, let's take a, take a little deeper dive into that maybe. I don't know the history on that street, if it's, if it has ever been looked at before, but if you want to toss that back to us.
I know, I came down the street the day that your speed thing was out there.
Well, it's out there in the night, except that it's farther up.
Yeah.
No.
Last week it was in front of Carly's house.
You can feel like you're going faster than you actually are, because I, I felt like I was going about thirty, and when I looked at it, it said twenty-two, so I wasn't going as fast as the speed limit.
Yeah.
So people can be perceived, if there's in their driveway or something, and see a car go by, you can look like it's going by faster than it actually is.
I'll make a motion that we kick it back to you and see if you and staff can make some recommendation to us.
Okay.
Second.
Sounds great.
So a motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Doherty, to have staff look into this and bring it back to us. All in favor?
Aye. Okay, I have one other question on somewhat the same topic, but I want it to be separate. Have we looked, I had somebody the other day ask me about the Krieger and Fifty-Eighth Street intersection.
Oh.
Where we've taken down the temporary signs, and they said, it's really nice when you come out of Menards, when that sign was there, and I know I was there today, and there were four cars backed up, because it was in the afternoon, there was a lot of traffic on Fifty-Eighth Street. So, have we, can we just kind of look and get an update? I didn't, nothing, I don't need a formal action at this point, just...
Sure, we can bring that down with staff tomorrow, we can discuss that, that's another, another animal, right, on that Fifty-Eighth.
That's why I said, just something, somebody brought it up to me, so I said, okay, but I, I didn't want it to get confused in the...
Yep, got it, definitely. Take a look at that, too.
Okay, and next is approval to hire two full-time police officers, Chief.
All right, Mayor and Council, we started our application process and to fill the vacancy of one of our sergeants that had left, and we had discussed in previously some workshop sessions about moving forward with maybe hiring an additional officer for next year, looking at possibly March, April timeframe. Our current process, I'm happy to report, we've got four solid candidates, and as we know now, we went from eighteen last year down to four. I wouldn't, I would prefer to move forward and not wait until next year, if we can adjust that second hiring by three to four months, anticipating start date maybe in November. So we can bring on two. If we've got strong candidates, I think we take advantage of that now. I really am fearful what that's going to look like, the candidate pool next year even. It's going to take a couple of years, quite honestly, to start bouncing back. So that's what we had before you, was approval tonight. In that eleventh officer, we have an anticipated retirement in 2024. So we do have that opportunity to come back, if we wanted to dial it back down to ten. If the budget says let's dial this back down to ten, that's on the table, of course. But, so, this would bring us up an additional one, and we can examine how that impacted the department, good and bad. Better, it's going to help us a lot.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the hiring of two officers.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Doherty, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
We'll look forward to finding out who it is.
Me too.
Not me, I already checked, they said. I know.
Then for other council items and announcements, just a reminder, Jen, I sent it to Jen already about the survey for the transport, the transition, energy transition committee, and then also the, the draft is out, it doesn't have all the graphs and everything in it, but if you have any comments or anything, let me, Jen, Carla Vida, I think everybody's got her emails as well, and it's already online too, under the stateminnesota.gov backslash, I think it's statemn, whatever, indeed, so you can see all of, all of the information there. And then I did contact the MPCA and that Melanie McMahon from the St. Paul Port Authority about having the work session with our council advisory committee and everything. And they're going to check internally with their, you know, who can come, what dates. And I said, it wasn't like absolutely urgent, but maybe like earlier in, if it was earlier in November, earlier in December, so it's not around holidays for everybody to try and work something, schedule out. So they'll be getting back to me, and then I'll bring it back to the council for dates to put it together.
And it looks like we're going to have nice weather for Saturday.
Doesn't it look great? Good weather for Thursday, for the ribbon cutting?
Thursday?
Oh, yes, all weekend.
All weekends.
And where exactly is the ribbon cutting happening at?
Right by the crosswater, by Autumn Hills Park.
Okay.
Norwich.
And what time is that one?
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty, okay.
Then if, is there any other council announcements or items? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.